The recipe for great food is simple. Make it fresh. Wings to Go in Greenville, where every order is a custom order made with fresh ingredients. Wings to Go, 7818 Wesley Street in Greenville. Simply great wings.
Need a part for the right price? Look for that red and blue sign. Henley Auto Supply at 1510 Stonewall. Over 800,000 Carquest parts to choose from. Domestic, European, and Asian parts. Henley Auto Supply at 903-455-1969. 455-1969. Henley Auto Supply has the right parts to keep your vehicle running. And backed by the best hometown service. Henley Auto Supply. Great people, great products, great prices. Henley Auto Supply and Carquest.
Work session to order. And the first item to discuss is Waste Connections update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At the last city council meeting, Mr. Cruz recommended or asked that the Waste Connections explain service complaints that you guys have been getting. So we've got Waste Connections here. We've also, just so you guys know, we've met with, obviously, service for us with Waste Connections. Kind of put a list together of current issues having these kind of things. That's the list that you guys have before you as well. Waste Connections has also received that list. So they've got that list. And I'll, Robert, with the connection up there, talk about those issues. Kind of a plan to kind of address those issues. How not only they're, they're working to address those issues, but we're working within on that piece before we offer Robert.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right. Come up here at the quest of y'all to kind of go over this, just as Summer had stated. Wanting to address some of the service issues y'all had seen, city has seen, of course, the last several months. This is backdated all the way through 2018. Some of these answers to these questions will be similar, if not the same. Some other ones I don't have maybe necessarily all the information you're looking for, being that we were not necessarily here back in 2013, 2018. I'll do my best to answer any of those questions and any follow-on questions I may have. If somebody would like to start, or if y'all want to go down this list directly, please let me know.
I think we go down the list and then if there's any more questions.
Okay. All right. Well, current issues then. Stop collecting overloaded toders without communication with the city. All right. Here y'all, something that's been discussed over the course of at least the last year and a half when I've been out here is our direction towards automation and how we service our residents. So currently and previously, the services provided in the city consisted mostly of rearload trucks and rearload services. What that means is you have a crew truck, they're going to load up into the back of that truck, picking up items on the ground for bulk and picking up your trash carts. What we've seen in the trash industry as a whole is that these trucks are not as efficient. They cost us more to run. And we've moved towards an automated truck which has an automated arm. You're not putting an individual out in the elements, such as right now, it's 115 degrees out there for a heat index, running around chasing out carts, picking up anywhere from 15 to 25 tons a day. You run those automated trucks and you reappropriate your rearload trucks towards bulk. What does that do? It doesn't wear out your personnel as much. You're able to use less personnel and work at a faster, more efficient rate. Our goal here was to begin this education process as we start forming towards automation within our company and within the city in literally a matter of days. Going to be receiving a new automated truck that we're going to be implementing out here. Now hindsight, did this go on too quick? Yes, I think it did. I think we learned some things here. I just spoke with Summer not too long ago and I wish I'd reached out to the city. To be honest with you, I did not feel that the city really was that interested in trash. And then I've hence learned otherwise. So blame that on my negativity over here. But I really was trying to get some things done on our end without having to involve the city too much. That is my mistake. I do apologize for that. But we saw the approach as being too aggressive and we noticed that with the call volume. I know Juice had been addressed. We met with the city last, last week or the week prior. We met with Juice, we met with the city, we met with our customer service center, trying to formulate a plan to get this kind of in order. Right now, what we have in the city is a large amount of overloaded carts and overuse of our current system, if you will. And what we're needing to do is modify how we're setting up ourselves to be successful later, be more efficient, get in and out of the streets and do it within a timely fashion. With these automated trucks, ideally, we're servicing these carts, especially like you go to school time, between the hours of seven and two and three o'clock, getting out of the way, getting the residents who are at work, they're getting home and your trashcans are empty, you're going to pull them back in, you're not having to think about us. When you're working these rearload crews, especially as kind of the storm hit, they're going and dumping two and three times a day. What does that mean? They're out on the streets, they're working later, they're not working as fast. A rearload crew's going to maybe do 85 homes an hour. You get a good automated driver, they can do about 160, 170. So our ability to operate quickly and efficiently is going to be directly impacted by how are these carts stacked? Are they, is there proper spacing between them? Are they overloaded? Are there constant issues with spilling or something like that, or something getting wedged up top? So again, I apologize with the abruptness of how this kind of went out. I didn't see this kind of turning into the monster that it became. But I do feel the conversation is critical and a good positive one going forward in addressing some issues here.
Robert, as part of that discussion, educating the customers of what the changes or the transitions are going to be to automation and what's expected.
Yes, sir. So as we kind of, we've got some tentative dates outlined here and we want to accomplish some goals in between there. I think that turning this on like a light switch was a mistake. But what we do want to do is educate and do it incrementally and get some modifications of behavior over a period of time that's going to give us our best long-term results. And not maybe disrupting anger everybody about, hey, now I've got to put my cart here and then move this one a foot over to allow for proper spacing. Or maybe I'm not going to stick to those extra bags up top, or hey, I've been doing this for years, I've always got my cart overloaded. You know, maybe I need a new cart. Maybe that's a real conversation that needs to be had.
I will hope that you use social media as well to educate the folks because the volume of complaints is horrendous on social media.
Yes, sir. So our, speaking with Bridgette and speaking with Camille over at Juice, is to get out educational programs across several platforms through social media, through written media. And we're going to get that out there. There's going to be mailers that are going to be posted out. We went over and we took Juice and several members of the city over to tour our recycling facility not very long ago. Did a big Q and A, got a lot of footage from there. And in terms of, and hopefully rectifying some of our recycling issues here as well, but that's all going to be in this campaign.
How many automated trucks are you currently running in?
So we were only running one. Now we're looking to run four.
So currently one though. And then how many rearload trucks?
Currently?
How many?
Yeah. Currently I have it running five.
Five, okay.
So when you have four automated trucks, will that mean that you only have one rearload?
Yeah, so ideally, what, and again, I don't want to jump the gun here. Ideally, we could propose some type of bulk schedule to mimic our recycle schedule Monday through Friday, alleviating that over the course of the week. And then trash would also be able to have some space in between those carts and we're going to limit the congestion at least several days of the week as it currently stands. That has been a discussion that we've had.
Is the automated truck able to haul more tonnage or weight or capacity?
They're very comparable. They're really, ideally, we don't want to put any more than 10 tons on a truck. We can usually get on between 10 and 13, depending on a given day. And that's going to be very similar to a rearload truck. The very large rearload trucks which we have here right now that do have a fifth axle are far outdated as far as where we're looking to move our company for. And it's not going to be something that we're implementing out there in the field.
So if the, so if you have more automated trucks, you say that can, that can do twice as many homes in a day, you're going to making, instead of two to three trips to the landfill, you're making four to six trips a day?
No. No, so currently I'm with my five trucks right now. So I guess we're muddling some months here. With the five trucks right now, I'm able to run them one haul a day and then about a haul and a half. But these guys picking up these homes quicker, they can get to the landfill, return and get out of the streets as opposed to being out there and working until probably about six o'clock tonight.
So you're making one to one and a half loads to the dump instead of two to three?
Doing it more efficient, yes, quicker. All right. Any other questions on that? All right. Regarding our cart supply, pandemic hit everybody hard. Hit transportation industries hard, it hit industrial industries. It was no different for our manufacturers and suppliers with the carts. All right. That being said, I'm going to address the 60-day piece real quick. Typically, we were receiving orders for 10 to 20 carts per week within the city to replace new homes, new builds, replace old carts. We've got plenty of old carts in the city. 10 to 20, right? Just to give you all a visual, this is the last week and a half. So if we wonder why there's a delay, it's because this right here has gone up astronomically from where we had been. Why is that? I can't particularly say. I can tell you about one out of every four of these is not legitimate for saying that a resident has called in and said, hey, my toter's been taken. We show up on site, the trash toter is there. So I can't give you a hard line answer as to what's happened, but I do know we have been bombarded with orders and we've been trying to keep up with them to the best of our ability. But going from 10 to 20 a week to well over 100 overnight is very difficult. And it's something we're working on. We brought in extra drivers this weekend. We were running four trucks to get all these toders out, we're caught up. But if this is to sustain, we're going to have to order more carts. And I was just talking with Summer on this. We kind of plan out the year, looking at organic growth within the city. We're looking at how many toders are going to be used and potentially disposed of just within the city and its normal daily use. If we're keeping up with this, we're far exceeding it already. We allotted four loads this year, I've already done six. So if that's any reflection on where we are, we're definitely getting these things fielded. It's not that they're non-existent, but they do take some time to get out there. Sometimes there's a six to eight week lead time for delivery. The transportation industry right now is still, still a little hit and miss at times. So we work with our sister districts and try to make sure that we can have an emergency supply should, should we run out. Currently not in that position, it's just a matter of the number of orders being placed in versus what we were seeing earlier. All right. Failure to maintain roll-off inventory. All right. Here's something relatively similar to what we're seeing right now with, with our carts. Last year, COVID, again, I'm going to keep using COVID, what happened with a lot of our industries, they died off. So we looked to rebound last year, kind of back to 2019 trends. It didn't happen. Roll-off stayed relatively slow last year. We had hired a fifth driver to come in here and work. We didn't even really need him as the course of the year ran on. We didn't need a large supply of roll-out boxes. This year, we've been busy. We've been busy since I've gotten back here in March. And we've stayed very busy and I've continued to bring in boxes from the outside. But a surplus of usually about 10 to 15 boxes that we would keep on our yard at any given point, plus what we had deployed, has been depleted. As soon as something's getting picked up, it's being immediately taken to a new haul site. This is no different than all of our sister sites. Steel is at a premium right now. It's very, very expensive. It's hard to get carts. So what we're doing is getting what we have, trying to get it repaired. I've got six coming in this week that are in need of repair, but we'll get them fixed up and fielded as soon as possible. But it's just a matter of the materials. I was speaking about our manpower. Manpower is not a problem. I know a lot of places are having staffing issues right now. We have been very fortunate. We have been, we've come across some phenomenal individuals, especially over the last two months. And they're out there driving right now on the streets and they are doing an amazing job. Highly skilled, very technically sound individuals. And we got them in all of our lines of business, so they're ready to work as long as the materials All right. Intermediate issues. A lot of this was spoken on back when, I believe, when I spoke with you all in April, as far as missed garbage at bulk. I think anybody here that is a resident could say that the missed garbage as a bulk is really, or missed garbage as a whole in large sections is pretty much all but gone away. We've, I guess I've got our staff members. That being said, we've got a lot of new guys, we have a lot of new faces, they're still learning this city. Not all of them are residents that here, some, a good portion of them are. But they're still learning these streets, they're still learning the routes. Sometimes we have homes, I'm going to use Park and O'Neill for an example, where there's a handful of homes that will place their carts in between those two streets. They see these maps, they see these hard borders, okay? They don't think to look left, they don't think to look right. And you know what? Sometimes it involves a coaching session. Sometimes it involves, hey, you need to take some extra attention and get this stop called out. I can name to you five addresses in the city that immediately ring, ring my bell, that we call out to the routes every single day, make sure that they're getting picked up and they'll call over the radio. And that's something that we're having to do until we can learn it. But we took a tenure as we kind of readjust our approach to business with probably about a seven-year tenure and we're down to about a year and a half right now. We have a young group of guys and they're new, they're, like I said, learning this area. But I don't think that you're seeing large service failures as we saw back in March. And that was, again, I, your storm-oriented failures, your COVID, your stimulus checks, those spikes, the tonnages have not dropped off. We're still within 200-ton range, a 200-ton range of where we were at in March and April and May. Tonnages haven't dropped off, but we're not failing at this point. We're not getting out of town to help as we were getting, we're supplying everything here internally, we're supplying our own trucks. Everything's being done here in-house and we're continuing to grow and look at how can we approach our business and still be effective.
In terms of those side streets that you mentioned, do you believe that you've worked out any issues with any of those residents that have brought up any concerns on that?
Are you specific to Park and O'Neill?
Yes.
That area is kind of the bane of my existence right now. I think we've really, we've got almost all of the areas hashed out. I can call it to you like 5,000 126 Comanche, I can, I can sit here and name you off a few that are just stops that just don't stick out. Yes, the Park and O'Neill section is being called out every single day. I think this is going to be our most successful way to go about it until we get it. Dylan, my supervisor back here, is on top of it. I, I'm standing here today telling you this is actively in my sights and we're going to get, get this area corrected. I know it's a handful of residents, it's not, it's not 50 people in between there, but everybody should be getting their service on their service day and we're working to get that corrected.
And I also know that it's not a common occurrence across the whole city, but there is Park Street where the south side, it says it's one pickup, then the other side, it says it's another pickup.
And that, the parts can be confusing. If you look at the map, I mean, when you really get in there, you can, you can make that assessment. And you can also say that a resident's been putting his cart out there for however many years, and they have oftentimes. I don't, I'm not trying to shake up anything. Sometimes it's a matter of, hey, nobody told this guy. And then maybe, I don't even know, maybe we've been doing it for so long, it's not something I've ever thought about going over and looking at. And it's a genuine honest mistake. Or it's just a conversation with somebody. We got a gentleman over off of Borland and Kennedy and it was a matter of where he was placing his carts out. He put one on one side of his house and one on the front of his house. We were servicing one and not the other, but we didn't make the corner because there wasn't any houses in between there. But a simple conversation fixed the whole thing. So I think having those open lines and just being, being open and receptive to, it's not what everybody wants to hear. I hear things all the time I don't want to hear. People tell me how they feel about me all the time. It's okay, I got thick skin. But I really, I think, I told Summer, I think one of our biggest failures is having that communication back with y'all, back with council, back with the city about what it is that we're doing and being transparent with our intentions. We're not trying to do anything out of malice. There's no secret agenda. We're genuinely trying to perform our services to the highest of their ability and utilize the tools that we have to be successful and ultimately, I mean, get the city picked up.
One of the questions I have is around this same issue. Tim and I both have neighbors who have had this issue that we talked about on Park in that Park Street area. And I know that this happens in other neighborhoods as well. It just happens to be this is the one that I know more about. But a neighbor will have this problem where trash doesn't get picked up and they make phone calls, lots of them, and the issue doesn't get resolved for weeks and months. And so my question would be, what's the disconnect here between someone making a service call and the issue being resolved? How can it, how can it go along that far?
So with that, I mean, oftentimes if I've got an individual address like that, I typically will give them my direct line and I will, I'll touch base with them and I'll make it my problem. So it's not making a call center blow up and it's usually resolved very quickly after that. But the call centers are great, but they're also, I mean, they don't have all the answers. They're, they're going to have to put somebody on hold, they're going to have to get ahold of somebody. I mean, I'm not always sitting behind my desk, I'm not always there. Dylan may not always be there. Our call center as well, if they were to call our office. It's not always an immediate fix. There are specific circumstances where I will go out and I'll reach out to certain individuals and I will directly make that a point to handle. But there is unfortunate that process with Juice or with McKinney's Customer Service Center, which is ours. When they give them that call, it's going to be a moment where they, they log the call, they're going to have to touch base with one of us, get that information, we'll supply an answer and then if we're found to be at fault, I mean, absolutely, if we get a resolution, we'll, we'll bend over backwards and get somebody there.
Do you have any, do you have any plans in place to try and improve this so that people don't get lost in the system for weeks and months at a time?
To improve this, did you say? Sorry.
Yes, crew. Is there a plan to improve that?
Yeah, so our call center just, just hired on four more new people over there. So as far as getting calls expedited, they had been inundated with calls, no different than Juice and the city. I think that pretty much everybody up here is aware that, I mean, those, those call volumes had spiked significantly. To speed that up, at our office in particular, we are, we are going through some, some changes over there with how we're going about dealing with things administratively and the responsiveness to that. And I mean, I can't go into great detail with what all is going on, but we are actively working with, with getting that corrected right now. The toter supply, y'all, this is, I mean, I kind of spoke on it recently, but if we're referring to the last 12 months for toter supply, it was strictly the pandemic. That was it. Manufacturers, suppliers, transportation industries being kind of redirected for their purposes, deliver essential aid to hospitals, your food, things like that. All right. Tags. Tagging something, I feel like, I had kind of torn on it and I've made myself vocal. So what we're doing right now is we're actually redoing our current tag system. Our current tag process, if any of you've ever received one or you've gotten one, is a relatively long form, requires the drivers to fill out a fair amount of information in there. And then go and actually place it on the trash bin itself. Could take anywhere from a minute to two minutes. Not that big a deal unless you're doing this 100-plus times a day. All right? We don't want to do that. We're coming out with a sticker form, it's going to be a couple of checks and boxes, you're going to write the date on it and you're going to slap it on there. Those should be arriving here soon and those will be starting to get fielded shortly thereafter. I would say that as far as tagging in the past, and speaking with prior management and individuals that were here well before myself, it had been very spotty. It's been hit and miss. There not necessarily been the greatest level of support for those tags being written. It was oftentimes that guys were being turned around and, hey, go pick it back up anyway, if I'm just being honest. And so a lot of them had gotten disheartened in the process. And more times than not, you'll see those same people that do, well, they're going to call in regardless of whether or not they got that tag. They just may be a couple of seconds more educated by the time they did receive it. But I am committed to getting these stickers out there and if this can do, do some good here, I would love to get it done. All right. Open tops and toders. I can't really speak to specific instances. I don't recall us having issues with open tops last year and their deployment. I know it was very, very slow. Our numbers last year with roll-off were horrible. We did have the staffing, but I can't speak to that. If anybody's got anything there specifically, I can maybe speak on it. But I didn't have anything from 2020 to note regarding any failures for deployment and
Do you want to go to the next issue?
Length of contract issues, all right. This is dating back 2018. Miss recycled garbage in bulk. Again, y'all, I can only speak to my time here. I know that we experienced some serious post-storm issues, March, April, and then into the front side of May. Since then, I felt like we've rectified that. I mean, if we want to take the overloaded issue out of, out of hand, we're not leaving things down en masse. We're conducting our services, we're going about our business, getting everything off the ground. Does anybody have anything there?
I think we're more concerned that the 60 days, the last 12 months, I don't know if we need to spend too much time on this final issue. Does the council have any other questions?
Are we able to do ride-alongs with you guys?
Yes, I, I've offered that. I would absolutely love to set that up if y'all felt like y'all wanted to go on, we can get a three-seater truck and get you out there and kind of see what, what's going on, what these guys are dealing with. I mean, today would have been a perfect day. It's a heat index of 115, it's sunny outside, it's no wind. You go on a rainy day, go pick the worst day you can. I think we had a, we had a helper candidate come in the other day and we were joking around how we're going to interview these guys and kind of changing things up, spicing things up, took them back to the backside of a loaded truck and had the interview at the back of the truck. It was hot and muggy and you can imagine how it smelled. And decided, hey, do you really want to work this job? These are, I would, I absolutely would love to have any, anybody up here, come do a ride-along, come see what's going on, even if it's for an hour or two, or just, just come see what's going on in the city. You can see what these guys are doing and how are they working and how are they conducting themselves.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank y'all very much.
Okay, the next item is item 2B, specialized public finances to provide plans, a plan of finance regarding issues of bonds and certificates. Steve, oh, Steve, okay. That's fine. We've got interviews.
Steve was just really excited to talk to you guys today.
You can off the podium.
We're, we have a couple of parts to this presentation. Jeremy is going to speak a little bit about the projects first that we're talking about financing here, just so that you guys have a better idea of what all is going on in the city. And then, sorry, Stephen, it's like this. Then after Jeremy's through, then Stephen will come up and he'll go through our plan of financing for this project. So feel free to stop either of them at any point.
Could you be sure it's maybe on the mic? I can't hear when you turn it on.
Jeremy's going to go ahead and present and then Stephen will present.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. First of all, I'd just like to start off and say how grateful we are for the opportunity to present this tonight. As most of you probably already know, we've took the better part of about two hours. So we've, we've condensed this quite a bit. So as I go through this, I'm gonna go through it very quickly. If you have any questions, please ask me, and I'll answer it the best that we can. There's still, as you'll see, there's still some things in here. We don't have all the, all the answers yet, but I think that'll be, be able to explain that a little bit more as we go. Okay, the projects that we're talking about, there's two of them. One is, is probably something you're familiar with already. It's the public safety radio infrastructure. And then the second one is the Fire Department Multi-Use Facility. So currently with our current radio system, some of the problems that you'll see, we have is our radio equipment is out of date and is no longer being supported by the manufacturer. And when it comes to replacing these mission-critical parts, we're coming to find them, we're having to go to third-party vendors to find these, if we can find them at all. So that's nothing new. We've, we've been talking about this, I think, since probably about 2016 or 2015 is when we first started talking about this. And so, most of you've already heard that. Secondly, interoperability. All the agencies here in the city, when it comes to fire, police, and public works and parks, we operate on three different radio frequency bands, which really what that means is we really can't talk to each other individually. We all operate on completely separate systems. And so it's been that way, you know, for as long as I've been here, at least 22 years. And it's been a problem. And as, as we move forward, unless we move forward with the system like that we're proposing, that's not gonna change. So that's probably one of the biggest things. But those two issues right there, to me, are the two most problematic things that we've been dealing with for the past 20 something years. Another one is channel congestion. So we have basically one channel, if you will, to talk on. And where that presents a problem is if we have a large incident or a large event going on, a disaster, all that traffic is on one channel. Where you'll see most agencies have separate, separate channels, or several channels where they can switch. They'll get dispatched on one channel, and then they'll be assigned an operating channel for them to go on. That way you can have multiple incidents at once, and they all have their own channel, if that makes any sense. And we don't have that, and have never had that. And that's a huge problem for us as well. Also, we run into occasional interference from other outside agencies. Fire Department has a leased tower site. So right now, we've bounced, since I've been in admin, I've, and we'll talk more about coverage later, but I've, I've been searching for decent coverage since I've been here and have yet to find it. However, the tower that we are, we are on now is by far been the best, but it's on a leased site that's, it's an unsecured site. Anybody could drive out there at any time. It's not very well maintained. But for what we have today, it's our best option. So what we're looking to do with this system, it'll be a secured system that will protect us from any outside forces, whether it be people and weather and so forth. Currently, our station alerting is not NFPA compliant. And so when we talk about that, you know, some of the things that, that will help us with was redundancy. Right now, if dispatch calls us at the fire station, they really have no way of knowing if we receive that call until we call them back on the radio. Well, sometimes that might take us 30 seconds to get out of bed, go to the radio, and acknowledge them. With a, with a compliant alerting system, it's gonna give them instant feedback whether or not that station was alerted. And also, some of the other things, it'll have redundancy there. Not only will we have alerts over the radio system, over the speakers, we'll also have it on monitors within the station and actual printout that the personnel will have. So, next slide. So currently, as an overview of our coverage, try to explain, if you look up in the top left there, you have a legend of what some of these different colors mean. And if you will, the yellow is, is our target. That's what we would like to see today as far as coverage. And what that means is that if we have, if we have yellow coverage, that gives us a 95% probability of coverage in a 30-decibel loss building when we're using our portable handheld radios. So the, the weakest link in our communication is our handheld radios. They put out the least amount of power, but quite honestly, that's what we use the most, are those handheld radios. That's what you see all the personnel carry when they get off their, their fire truck, they get out of their squad cars, they have those portable radios. That's how they communicate most of the time. So we need to base our coverage off that. And so an example of a 30-decibel loss building would be some of your manufacturing facilities. That doesn't cover all of your manufacturing facilities, that does cover most of them. Some of the facilities we will see, we'll still see struggles in, L3 will be a proud example of that, and some of our very large buildings that are out there. But once again, it'll cover most of what we need. Second, down on the list there is your 20-decibel loss. That's your commercial buildings. That's what you can expect like in a Walmart. That's your next color there. And then also, as you get down to the 10-decibel loss, that's gonna be what you can expect in a residence. And once again, these are all on, based off handheld coverage. So you can see, if you just look at this now, this is our current coverage. We have on the PD system, basically you have to be standing right under the repeater sites in order to get that coverage. You have it virtually nowhere in the city, other than directly under where, where one of the repeater sites currently are located. My favorite one here is if you look at the Fire Department, it's not exist. And it hasn't been that long ago where I could go, especially on the south, into town, and I had trouble getting out on a mobile radio, which is what is in our apparatus. Virtually no chance of getting out on handheld. And that's been my entire career here. So I, I hope that really illustrates why we're pushing this and, and the need for it. So some of the goals with the new system that we're looking at, we want to meet those industry standards. We want to meet that 30-decibel requirement, 95% of 30-decibel loss requirement that we talked about. Our current system does not meet that. We want a system that is gonna be able to continue to operate in adverse conditions, basically with multiple repeater sites. If one goes down, we'll be able to still function. Right now, the FD has one site. So if it goes down, we've lost our communication. Public safety radio coverage. Basically, what we're talking about there with all those bullet points is, you know, these systems are, they're hardened, they're, they're designed to be used by public safety personnel, they're designed to be dropped in the water, they're designed to go into fires for, for the police officers, they're designed to stand up to the rigors of, of what they're exposed to. It's, it's different than just what you buy off the shelf, and that's why these things are so expensive. Part of the reason why these systems are so expensive. Next there, local and regional interoperability. Currently, we, like I said a while ago, we, we really don't have a, a good communication, not only between ourselves, you know, we can't really talk to each other, but we can't talk outside our agencies very well either. And so this system will bring all of that together. And last, but certainly not least, system security. I talked a little bit about that with, with Fire's current system particularly. Anybody could really go out there right now and access our system, and we really wouldn't know anything about it until our system went down. It's not, it's not very well secured at all, and that's something we certainly need to address through this. So the first two, starting on, on your left there, the first here is our current coverage as it states. And with the new proposed system, that's what our coverage, coverage would look like. So you see that yellow, that target, what we're going for, how that expands throughout our city. With just a few spots left there that we don't have that 30-decibel coverage. Does everybody understand? I think this is one of the most important slides, so I want everybody to understand this, this particular illustration, kinda where we're at today and where we're going.
And the proposed system will be for all users, police, fire, anybody.
And public works.
This will be the route.
This will bring our city together as a whole. Everybody will have access, everybody that currently has a radio system will have access to this system. You know, one of the things that's worth mentioning too is public works, you know, they'll be under our umbrella, so their system would be just as secure as ours is now. So I think that's a huge bonus for them as well.
In, in the future coverage map, how many computers?
So what we're looking at right now is, it depends on which vendor you go with. One vendor is proposing three and one is proposing two. So it'll be a minimum of two with potentially three.
Wouldn't it be a value add, or wouldn't it be beneficial to have three, just for redundancy?
I think so, for sure. And it is, I haven't really talked about it yet, we're still in the evaluation phase. We're not quite halfway through the proposals that, that we've received. We're still in negotiation with the vendors. So I, I can't stand up here today and tell you which one of the vendors we're gonna go with, but that's definitely a factor that we're looking at, and I completely agree with what you just said. So.
Yeah. While I've got your attention, I have one other question I wanted to ask you. When you mentioned physical, physical security.
Yep.
We didn't really talk about what you meant by cyber security. By that, do you mean that the public would no longer have access to listen to the radio like they do now?
I think most of these, I know the police side will be encrypted, really haven't had a lot of in-depth discussion on what we're gonna do on the fireside or public works encryption-wise. I would anticipate some levels of encryption on our side, but those are, those are further discussions that we, we haven't walked all the way through yet. So.
Would you do that because you think it's a problem for the public to be able to listen?
In certain circumstances. You know, same, I think in sensitive incidents, yes. Which is, you know, we currently have that, the police department has that, fire doesn't at this time. The police department has it for their tactical situations, obviously. Fire, we haven't had it in the past. We are digital now, so it makes it, it's, it does have some level of encryption when you go digital. But our frequencies right now aren't Does that, does that answer that, or you want me to clarify anymore on that?
It does.
Okay. So the next slide here comes down to costs. So we, we've submitted proposal, or, we've got two submittals back from two prominent vendors, L3 Harris and Motorola. Staff has currently evaluated these proposals and negotiating with their vendors for their best and final offer, as well as determining the particular type of system that is gonna suit the C of Greenville best. Most of our current decision hinges on whether or not it would be better to own our own switch. Or maybe for a better way to explain it is, the switch is a central control point. Whether or not we wanna own our own switch, or if we wanna partner with an existing public safety entity that already has a switch. And we're looking at two right now. One is Rockwall County, they, they're with L3 Harris. And the other one is GMRS, which I think is Garland, Mesquite, Raleigh, and Saxi, I believe is what the GMRS stands for. And obviously, they would be with Motorola. So both of them own their own switch. And if we went with them, basically what you're looking at, if we own our own switch, you're looking at some higher upfront costs. But if you go with a shared switch system, there's gonna be subscriber fees, annual subscriber fees that go with that, that we would incur annually. So we're currently evaluating and talking to those other agencies on, you know, what that price point might look like. And we're not finished with that yet. So that's why you see, if you'll look through that, that slide there, there's some, there's various numbers and that's what they stand for. And hopefully, the city owned switch versus a shared switch makes sense. Does, does any of you have any questions over that? I don't wanna go too far into that, just so we can get through this in a timely manner. But I certainly will.
Can you give us a really simple explanation of what a switch does in the system?
So the switch is kinda like the brain of the system, quite honestly. It, it controls the system, if you will. A lot of these systems now are, are computers. They're, they're computer-based. And, and the switch is, is what tells, on these trunk system, the, the signal comes in, it gets processed back out to, to the users, and it controls all of that. Now, if the switch goes down, we still can operate, but it's just on a much simpler, much simpler scale. We can get more detail in that. I know I've got, our deputy chief is here, and he can, he can go into more detail, but honestly, you could spend, you could talk around in circles for an hour and still not completely understand it. But if you can imagine just kind of the, the central core of the system, that is what the switch is. Everything comes in and out of the switch. So. Any questions on that, on those processes? And I apologize once again for being so brief, but really it took us two hours to get through this, and I know we don't have that amount of time today. So I'm trying to hit the high points and keep moving. So this is our timeline. And to give you a frame of reference, we're at step three today. We're reviewing the vendor proposals. Obviously, we have not selected them yet. We're still negotiating with them. And, but we are very, very close to being, to the point where we're ready to select a vendor. If we were to move forward today, if you see that down at the very bottom, we're looking at implementation of about December of '22 through March of '23 would be a best guess scenario for us. Any questions on that? All right. Any questions on the radio project? And please feel free to ask. I know that's, that's a very broad overview of it, and I'd be willing to answer as many questions as we've got.
Chief, I don't have any questions, but as part of the Public Safety Subcommittee, sitting through the two hours that we went through, I, I just wanna reemphasize, our system is outdated, and as we move forward, we want the best that we can for the city of Greenville and everything inside the ETJ, and a system that will take us through the next 20 or 30 years. So as, as we're looking at all this, we don't need Band-Aids, we don't, it's time to do it right. So.
Yes, sir. And I think staff 100% agrees with you. And I hope you felt that way after leaving that subcommittee meeting, for sure. Because I know we gave you guys a lot.
You had those feelings of the subcommittee.
We feel the same way. We feel like a lot of things have been done as a Band-Aid over the years, and, and it's, it's time to do something the right way for once, for lack of a better term. So next, we're gonna talk about the, the Fire Department Multi-Use Facility. So some of the deficiencies of our current facility, when I say current facility, I'm talking about the Fire Administration Building. The current building is in, quite honestly, terrible shape. I put bad, but it's in terrible shape. We've been in that particular building since, I believe 2005 is when it was remodeled for, for the Fire Administration. It was built in 1953. We are beyond capacity. So we're full, most of you, I believe, have been through that building at least once. And so you can attest to, to that. Another point here is the Greenville Fire Department doesn't have a training facility. We really don't even have a training classroom that's dedicated to the Fire Department. Since about 2008, the Fire Department has really expanded its technical rescue services. You know, it's just not a Fire Department anymore. We do EMS is a huge part, but the biggest thing that we really expanded on is our technical rescue capabilities. And that takes a ton of extra training. And up until this point, we've used the library. Here at City Hall, we've used the Fiesta Room. The Civic Center is probably where we, we do most of our training. But what we're seeing there is that we can't get those facilities hardly anymore. You know, as the city gets bigger, they're being rented more by, by our citizens, and it's getting tougher and tougher for us to find a place to train. Next there, and this is a big one, and one that's somewhat embarrassing, but we don't have a dedicated, or adequate, adequate emergency operations center. Most of our, when we have, and we, we saw this with the, the storms and the winter storms that we just had, we had to do the large majority of our communications through phone calls and emails, which for the most part was. calls and emails, which for the most part worked out for us, but it would have been beneficial if we had a dedicated facility, a hardened facility, that's designed to manage those situations. And currently, we don't have that. And at the bottom there to close out, we, the building, the current fire administration just doesn't meet any future needs. I've got a couple examples in here of the structural condition of fire administration. I showed most of, most of the council this already, but it doesn't hurt to see it again. You know, a great picture here is if you can see the doorway there on your right, you can see how far the, the floor has settled there at the bottom. And that's just throughout the building. That continues to happen. We had, we had a structural engineer come out about three years ago, three or four years ago. K S A came out and, and looked at it and recommended not to spend, not to spend any more money on it. I don't, Dr. Ranson was probably here for that, I think, but everybody, I think everybody else is new since then, but we have had it looked at by a structural engineer and they did recommend it.
It's terrible.
Yeah. But pictures, you know, pictures kind of speak for themselves, especially at this level, so. Talking about overcapacity a little bit, to me, this stands out, it may not to you guys as much, but our fire marshal reviews all the commercial building plans that come through the city. And he needs to keep those. We need to keep those for several reasons. You know, one great reason I like to point out is if we ever have, if we go into a building or doing an inspection and they've modified that building, and let's say they haven't, they haven't, they took a sprinkler system out. And the fire marshal goes, man, you know, you guys are supposed to have a sprinkler system in here and they go, we've never had that. This gives us the opportunity to go back to that building and say, yes, you have, or, you know, it just gives you a common place to start from, especially older buildings, so. But if you look at this, this is, this is where we storm currently. Our attic is completely full and now it's spilling over to the stairwell to that. And so, you know, I use the word embarrassing a lot, but you know, it really is. It's, it's not adequate at all and it really is embarrassing when people walk in there and have to see that, so. Another point, a great point I like to point out, because I'm proud of it, is our community risk reduction program. Sylvie does a great, Sylvie and, and the firefighters that help her out and Chief Papa Georgia, they do a great job at educating our personnel and, and our citizens on how they can reduce risk. You know, it's not just fire risk anymore, it's all kinds of risk. It's such a huge program for us and currently, all of their equipment and education material is just, it's all stored in our, in our break room, if you will, in the kitchen. It's, it's the best we got, though. So it's, you know, you may do with what you got, but it's definitely inadequate. And last but not least there, we have inadequate evidence storage. So our fire marshal is responsible for investigating every fire that we have in the city. And sometimes those end up being criminal and we have to keep that, that evidence and, you know, it really should be in a much more secure location than what we currently have, We talked a little bit about no training facility already. I discussed with you, we don't have a dedicated classroom. We have to go outside our facilities to, to find one of those each time we train. We have no live fire training facility. So one of the things I talked about with the Public Safety Committee is, when I first came to work here and, and in 2000, my first job was in Flower Mountain. I worked there for about two years. I think I had one, maybe two fires when I worked in Flower Mountain for those two years. And I came to Greenville and within the first six months, I probably had four or five. And my point there is I got a lot of on-the-job training. And what we're seeing now, though, is, is our fires in Greenville are starting to go down. And they have, they've trended down for the last, probably for the last 15 years. And a lot of that is new, we're getting newer construction and, and I hope a lot of it is attributed to our, our fire education programs. I really feel like it is. But nonetheless, we've lost that on-the-job training. Not that that's where you want to really do your training, but that, we did at least have that. And so, we don't have that anymore, so there's a real need there to have live fire training facility. And I told the Public Safety Committee this, since I've been here, other than the on-the-job training, we've never had any live fire training in our department. It's all been relied on, when it comes to live fire training, it's, it's all been on-the-job training.
Chief, this type of facility could also be offered to volunteers around the county and different cities as, and use that to bring in some revenue for our city to help pay for this, correct?
Yes, sir. We fully expect to use us, you know, not just, you know, fire departments. We could, we could lease this thing out for a technical rescue. You know, it just doesn't have to be live fire training. So we fully intend to do that. We don't really know how we're going to do that yet and I think it'll vary too. We'll probably have, if I, if I had to guess today, we'll do a day rate, but what we'd like to do as well is maybe talk to the county at some point and maybe let them buy a block of hours. That'll be more of a steady, steady stream. And if they want to do any specialty training or any classes on top of that, then we'd work out a daily rate for that as well.
Things like task force one, task force two training.
Yeah, anybody could train for, yeah, absolutely. Anybody, and you see that quite a bit on facilities like this, they'll, they'll rent those out. It's usually somewhere around $1,000 a day, $1,000 a day to $1,500 a day plus personnel costs, so. The second tab there, we talked, Mr. Atkins talked a little bit about some of the task force training is our advanced rescue training. We would set this up where we could do a lot of our advanced rescue or our technical rescue training at this facility. Right now, basically, we send everybody off to either Tarrant County or College Station and then they come back and we go out to what we call our target hazard, our target hazard facilities. And that may be L3, that may be a water tower, and we train there. The problem with that is, and that's good training, by the way. We need to be doing that and we'll continue to do that. The problem is, that's not really where you want to sharpen your skills, if you will. You want a much more controlled environment to get your skills ready to go out there. And that way, you're much more efficient with your training when you're having to interrupt some of these manufacturing facilities that we go into and, and they let us, you know, they'll shut down their operations sometimes for a day to let us go in there and, and do high-able rescue at their facility. And so, it'd make us much more efficient there and give us a, a controlled environment to do that training. And hopefully, we wouldn't have to send so, as many people off. I know we would not, hopefully. I know we wouldn't have to send as many people off to these other training facilities as well. We can do more in-house. I don't think it will ever alleviate the need to send people off, but I think it will greatly reduce that need.
Chief Powell, do you know what the difference in cost is between, you know, building our own facility like this versus using an outside facility? Or a set of this outside facilities?
Well, so that varies a little bit. Like right now, we don't do any live fire training. So if I were, if I were to compare, if we were to start doing live fire training and we had, we would have to send a whole shift off at a time and pay them overtime to do that. I'd be guessing a little bit, and I probably should have that number for you, but when you start talking about overtime, that's when it gets so expensive. And with a facility like this, we're able to do it on shift, in-house. I don't have to send a whole shift and apparatus to, you know, Garland would be the, the closest facility if it's available and then Collin County would probably be our, our second facility that we would have access to. So I don't have that number, quite honestly, but I could put something together, give you an idea. I'll, I'll be totally honest with you. You know, if we were to do it all offsite, I don't know that you would have to look at it over the life of the facility. And that would be the, the important thing. You know, I expect this facility to serve us for 30 years. And so, what I would look at is, all right, over 30 years and, and if we did this once a year, how much is it going to cost us once a year? And then I'd have to project an increase in personnel costs over those 30 years, so, you know, fuzzy math a little bit, but I, I think at the end of the day, it would still be less on our own facility, especially if we, if our plan to move forward is like what Ms. Atkins says, is we're cooking some of these costs through leasing it out and conducting classes here as well.
What, so you mentioned overtime, which is kind of interesting. If we had our own facility, would we not be paying overtime? Would it be in shift?
Yeah, we'd try to do most of it on shift. And you, we do, most of our, the training that we do here now, we do it on shift for the most part. A large majority of it is, is on shift. We usually do two engines at a time and they're still available for calls, but you know, most of our calls only require one or two engines. And so, that's kind of how we get by with that. If we catch a fire, then that, that's when it requires all, all of our personnel on a fire. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So you're saying it's almost like a two-fold savings to do our own facility. One is not paying overtime and the other is you can recoup some costs by leasing it out to other departments.
Yeah, that's our intention for sure. You know, and I think that, another benefit of that, that kind of fosters a better relationship with our outside volunteer fire departments. And we, not saying we have a bad one now, because that's important for me, you know, that's where I started, so you can ask any of our guys. But it gets us a better working relationship. So if we ever get to the point that we have to call on them more, I think we'll have a better understanding of, of each other's operations at that point. So the next topic here is, like I talked about, we have no emergency operations center. And to give you just a, a broad picture of what an operating, emergency operations center is, it's a facility designed to provide a central point of communication, coordination, and command at a strategic level, so a big picture level. It provides an adequate controlled environment to log, to manage large emergencies and even large events. And especially as we grow, we're going to see more of the large civic events that, that will need that level of coordination. But I can tell you recently, if we'd have had, if we'd had something in place for the winter storms and the weather event that preceded that, it would have been nice to have. A big feature here is that, that last bullet point states, these are hardened, these are storm shelters, basically. These are hardened facilities that are designed to, to survive major weather events. They're tornado shelters, built tornado shelters. They're more expensive to build. The current facility that we're talking about, building, will have a certain section in it that is designed, the whole building won't be designed for that, but the section that houses the E O C will be designed for that, so.
Approximately how many square feet are you talking about?
Okay, so as we move into this slide right here, yeah. I don't have it written on here. So what we're proposing is to construct a, a multi-use, multi-function facility that hopefully would meet our needs for the next 30 years. That's what we're looking at. It will be a dedicated learning and training facility, dedicated emergency operations center, and fire administration that is adequate for today and tomorrow's needs. What we came up with was about 9,700 square feet for the, for the administration building, E O C. So in that particular building on your left that you see there, that would be your fire administration, your E O C, and a training classroom. And so, the, the two buildings on the right would be the, the live fire training facility and behind it would be a, a storage building for apparatus and equipment. This is an overview of, of our proposal. And I'll stress this, this right here, and the Public Safety Committee knows this already, but this was done, this started when we, we were talking about the grocery store across the street. So this was done in, this sketch that you see was done by fire administration. This wasn't a consultant that came up with this. But what we did, we, we took this, we toured several facilities in the metroplex and the surrounding area to kind of, I'll get an idea of how far off base we were. And we were pleasantly surprised that we were actually pretty close. And we're pretty happy with this, but what we would do for, you know, if this went forward, we would actually hire an architect to, to further refine what we're looking at. I've talked with an architect already. He looked at this and he was, he was surprised at how close it was. You know, one of the things he pointed out is like, where's your riser room for your sprinkler system? Where's your electrical room? You know, we didn't, we didn't put that in there, so. But as far as the overall layout, we were very, very happy with what we've got. One of the things important to point out is, the police department, they have, their current dispatch system, they have a problem in there that they really have no room for growth. So it's full. And if you know that building, there's really not an efficient way to, I guess, expand, if you will, just because of the way the construction is. And so, one of the things, we, we talked to them and, and we looked at, we were going to have an alternate dispatch in here, just in case, you know, the, the police department went down. But as we move forward, we actually, we're talking about making the primary dispatch in this facility and at some point down the road, the current dispatch center in P D would be the alternate site, if you will. And that, that's just part of the, the plan of, of planning for expansion down the road, because at some point, this city's going to need more dispatchers. We're really already there and it's a great opportunity to plan for that as well.
And that also provides a redundancy that we're searching for.
Absolutely. And another component of redundancy, speaking of redundancy that we're looking for, we've talked with I T, they're currently looking at a, a facility to have a backup server room. And I think, you know, we'll have more talks with them about that, but I think this will be a great opportunity to incorporate them into that hardened facility that we're talking about. And as you can see, they're very well spaced, you know, they're several miles between the two, so I can't think of really of a better opportunity as far as that goes as well. But those are discussions we'll, we'll have with them if we move forward, so.
Excellent presentation. And Mr. Atkins, I think you're the, you're the chairman of that Public Safety Committee and you, the committee unanimously recommended this, is that correct?
That, that's correct, Mayor. The committee unanimously said go forward with this.
Okay. Excellent, excellent presentation.
Any other questions?
Yes.
If I can, I'd really like to thank Chiefs Doggsville, Captain Starnes, Chris McCaslin, and Battalion Chief Warren for their, for their work they put in on that radio project. I can't say enough about what they've done to, to get us where we are today. Thank y'all very much.
Okay. The next item is item 2C, discussion of Collector Street, Road and Tract.
Can I have the financial piece?
No, I'm sorry. You can go outside.
Is that okay?
We'd just still like to hear from you.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, what we have is financing plan and let me just, if you go to the first page, I'm just going to step back one second and talk about the two types of tax back debt that we're going to be selling. One of them is the general obligation bonds, which have already been voted. It's 54 million 500 for Streets and we're going to sell all of these at once. We don't need any other preliminary action, so we're going to sell these on September the 14th along with the certificates of obligation. Now, certificates of obligation have the exact same credit as a general obligation bond. But instead of voting them, what we have to do is publish two times in the newspaper on the same day of the week and the council can't sell them until 45 days after that first publication. So tonight's agenda item, the action item, is authorizing that publication. And that's, that's all it is. The rest of it is information. So when you look at this, the 54 million in Streets, we're doing 30-year bonds, we're doing them level debt and we determine the amount, talking to the city staff and the bond lawyer, Rob Collins, by the way, who's here. We have to be able to spend this in two years and we believe we can do that. So if we couldn't, we would break this up into two bond issues. Certificates of obligation, the council packet has a not-to-exceed amount of 67 million 300,000 dollars. Subsequent to that being mailed, we are adding the 321,000 dollars for the Austin Park updates. So what we will be asking, instead of what was in the council mail-out, is the 67 million 625,000 not-to-exceed amount that we have in this presentation. The bulk of that is going to be paid, is going to be used to, for the water line that goes from Lake Tewahkni to here, that is decades old and in need of redoing. That portion of the C O's will be paid out of utilities- That portion of the COs will be paid out of utility rates. And so it will not be paid out of ad valorem taxes. We estimate, based on last year's number, that there would have to be about a 6 and 1/4% rate increase to pay for this $50 million in debt. That doesn't count growth that we know is going on in the city, and that does count a coverage factor of 25% of revenues over that. We'll go through that a little bit in a minute. For the general, for the COs, for the public safety radio infrastructure, for the multi-use facility, which is the operation center here, and contingency in the park, we think we can sell all those bonds without a tax rate increase, primarily because we have growth in the assessed valuation, and your current debt is falling off. And if you go to the next slide, we can look a little bit more at the debt. I know these are small, we have a graph, but the general obligation bonds are basically going to be $2.6 million per year in debt service, except for the first two years, we're ramping it up a little bit and structuring around current debt. The certificates have a 10-year component and a 20-year component. So the first 10 years is just under $4 million, and the remainder, it's just under $3 million. And so, and then there is a 30-year component of that, which is for the water line coming in from Lake Tewocne. So that one has debt service that goes down over time. We try to match the debt service to the expected life of the asset. So the radio equipment, we're repaying all that in 10 years. The building's 20 years, the water line, 30 years. So that's why we have different structures for each project. Go to the next page. You can see the sources and uses and how we get to the numbers. The $54,500 is the voted amount, cannot exceed that. The par amount of the bonds includes all of those lines, plus all of those projects that you can see, plus estimated cost of issuance to get to the $67,625,000 not-to-exceed The next page, this is the coverage. If you look on the far right, you see that number 1.27. Okay, if you take the revenues minus the expenses, operating revenues minus operating expenses of the utility system based on 2020, that number, we wanted to exceed the debt service by 1.25 times. So you've got 25% of cash after debt service that you use to pay for projects over time, some improvements that you don't want to pay out of debt, and also to build contingencies in case things break. And so that also, I'd like to point out one thing, we do have the option of selling revenue bonds instead of certificates of obligation. However, we get a lower interest rate with certificates of obligation, because it's a higher credit rating than a revenue bond. Furthermore, with a revenue bond, we would have to add a reserve fund, so we'd have to sell an additional 10% of debt to fund that reserve fund. So we free ourselves from some bond covenants, basically by having the taxpayers, if you will, co-sign for the water utility. So that is in fact what's going on, but the water utility is still expected to pay all of this debt on their own. On to the next page, on just the tax-supported debt, you can see the green section, it goes up just a little bit as we add on the debt. This is both the GO bonds and the portion of the COs that's not the Lake Tewocne line, because all the fire department stuff and the park has to be paid by the taxpayers. And so you can see, after about 2028, your debt falls off precipitously. And so if you had to do more projects at that time, you could again do that without a tax rate increase. And we've preliminary estimated that in '28 or '29, you'll have about $90 million of capacity to sell for probably more repairing of your infrastructure, like you're doing now, at that time. And that, you could do that without a tax rate increase. Next page, this is the different components of the tax-backed COs. You can see the 10-year portion for the radio equipment, and the rest of it is for the emergency operations building. And then on the far right, for the park, you can see the park adds $20,000 a year or less. And really, if we get a favorable interest rate compared to what we have here, that's not even going to show up in debt service compared to what we're showing you today. So we're hoping on that. On a calendar, the next page, we talked about your council action tonight. So what you're doing tonight is authorizing publication in the newspaper. That has to occur twice. We're having that occur on July the 29th and on August the 5th. During that time, we're going to have to get bond ratings for all of this debt. So we're going to have to prepare ratings, we're going to have to do a rating presentation with standard emporers, and we're going to have to prepare offering documents for this debt. We expect to sell all of this debt on a competitive bid basis. We'll take bids on the morning of September the 14th. We will bring those bids to the meeting that night. So these banks, these big broker-dealers that bid on these bonds, they won't bid on it until the day that the council's going to act, because they're at financial risk between they submit their bid and when you accept it. So we'll take those bids in the morning, we'll award it that night, and we will deliver on October the 14th. And all of this, of course, is dependent on your council action tonight. The next page and the last page, I just want to show you where we are with the interest rates over the last 10 years. They're virtually at all-time lows for tax-exempt bonds. There's so much demand for tax-exempt bonds for a number of reasons, and interest rates are coming down. So I think from a historical perspective, we're really had a good time to sell bonds. And that's another reason it's good that we can spend all this money. We do have to spend all of it in two years. We talked about, do we want to do half now and half later? But looking at these interest rates, it just feels like there's a more of a risk of it going up for a year or two than it really can't go down much at all. So I think we have a good plan to get as much debt as we can now and spend it and move ahead with these projects. And Mayor, back to you.
I have some questions, but the council, any questions?
I just have one quick question. Are we going to structure any of these bonds to be called, to have the ability to be called early if we get some grants or ARPA funds or things like that, where we could pay them off early or apply to work the debt?
Okay, these rates are based on a 10-year call. Between now and then, we can hopefully learn more about some of these programs, and if we feel like we're going to get money in three years, we can put a three- or five-year call on some of these bonds. If you could then, if you wanted to, or the council at that time, either pay them off or use that money for deferring other debt, basically.
The intake of raw water line, we've been studying that for some time, and we, $50 million that you've allocated or we've allocated in this resolution tonight, is on the top end, I believe, of what Mr. Press has talked about. And in the event we don't use all those monies, and of course, we have some reserve funds too, that we might be able to apply that you're aware of, I think a couple of $10 million. What do we do? If we, we'll sell all $50 million of those bonds, and then can you tell me?
Yeah, I think-
If we only use, for example, $40 million, what happens?
We have a water plant that needs expanding.
That could be used there.
And other, any water purpose, Rob?
No, that's right, Mayor, exactly right. It's, the way the purpose is written, it is for improvements in water-
Water dis-
Water and wastewater system.
Anything.
Including the Lake Tewocne line and intake out of Lake Tewocne. So if you, if you were fortunate and the bids came in lower than you're expecting to get the project done, we know you have other water sewer improvements, and that money would be used for, or could be used for those other water purposes.
Okay, so anything within the water fund that could be used?
Water or wastewater. Right, water or wastewater, that's right.
And the other thing, you touched on the projected increase in water rates, and I think during one of our sessions with you, you'd indicated that all the comparison cities and competitive cities are struggling with that. And it sounds like a big increase, but everybody's experiencing that now too. Is that correct, or can you speak to that?
That is very correct. I mean, between the growth that we're having and aging facilities at all cities and increased enforcement by the TCEQ on the wastewater side, almost every city in this whole area is facing some type of capital program for their water system. And I, everybody's rates are going to be going up, so you'll still look favorable. I know costs are going up for water and wastewater systems everywhere, and it's just unfortunate, but that's what everybody's going to see, I think, nationwide.
And the other thing is, is I guess I have a confession to make. This morning, I asked Summer if it was possible to include the Austin Park in this bond package, and she contacted our bond council, was able to include that. I think it's a really worthy park, a worthy area where we need to build a park for children that can't get to Grand Park, et cetera. And it's, I think it was, you said 321 million, or whatever the number was, but, or, I mean, 321,000. I think it's a, I think it's a good time. I think it's a good time to be adding that, because I think it's a good time with the interest rate. I don't think, I think it's a, it's a good, good to see to include that in this. So, and what is the life, what is the life of that, or is that included in here?
That's 20 years.
Okay, that was a 20-year, okay. Any other questions?
Just real quick, and I'm doing some quick math. If, if my math is correct, the 6.25 rate increase would basically amount to about 23 cents per 1,000 gallons of water, right?
I didn't do that calculation. If I tried to do it now, I'd make a mistake, but I bet you're right.
Well, we're going to be $380 per 1,000, or, you know, 38 cents per 100, so it'd basically be about-
Yeah, and let me, you know, let me say something about that as well. We're not rate consultants. We just divide by the connections or by the debt service, and you may have, you know, within your rates, when you study them, you have commercial, industrial, residential. So, you know, those rates are probably going to get spread differently than just straight across the board.
Good point, thank you. Are we going to do a wide study, or are we doing more?
We put it in the budget for next year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions on bond council? Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can move to a brief discussion about collector's streets, road into traffic control. Was that a brief?
It's going to be brief.
Looks like it would be.
Explain what we came up with. Went too fast. I've put this slide in because I don't know what council members have seen this pavement deterioration curve. It's based upon the payment condition index, which we just had a company went through and did all of the city streets. And what they came up with was our average PCI for a city street is 45. And you can see by this chart, critical condition is 55. I mean, very critical. And what it tells you is, when you look at the pavement deterioration, we're already out here at 45. If you come down like that, we only have two, three years left for total lifespan of our streets. So we're in critical condition right now, just based upon, and that's an average of all the streets. And here's another slide that kind of emphasizes the same thing. If you let your PCIs fall below 55, you're looking at four to five times what it takes to fix the road to get it back to just fair condition. You know, in fair condition, the bottom of fair is around 55, 60, 70 to get satisfactory. So we're hanging down here. So that's the whole purpose of having this study done, is let us know really what condition our streets are in. And I hate to say it, we're in poor condition. So I just wanted to give this slide to give you all a reference of what we're talking about and where we're trying to go. But you can see the life expectancy of roads is around 18, 20 years, roughly in that range. Some more, the concrete streets we're building are, will get a longer lifestyle, and we'll probably get about 30 years out of those. These are the streets that we chose, now, let me back up a little. We are doing the traffic counts right now. They should be finished those in the next couple of weeks, and we're going to add those into our paper program and see if that's going to change anything we need to do. But we do have that flexibility. But we chose these because they were major collectors. Look at, and look at the PCIs on them. 42, 57, 32, 59, 39. Walnut, we kind of split that up between the commercial area and the residential area. And we did not rate Trader's Road because at that point in time, it was still in the lawsuit, and we didn't want to do anything to jeopardize that. So we did not have that rated. These are ones that we've already put out to the consultants. They've already gotten started on it. This was a plan we put together to, like Steve just told you, we can do the program, spend the $50 million in the two-year time cycle. We really, the consultants have really jumped on board with this. GeoTech has already started taking all the core samples we need, so things are moving very well. I'm very pleased with that. These are the ones that consultants are doing at the top, and these are some we're doing in-house. Carroll Street, we just finished putting brand-new water and sewer in Carroll Street. We put a 12-inch water main connected to another 12. We've seen a significant increase in pressure and volume of water out there. Residents in that area are ecstatic about it. But that's why, but we still need to fix the drainage, and then the road has a PCI of 41. It's actually worse than that, because we tore it up pretty good putting in the water and sewer. Templeton is another one that we're doing kind of in-house, and you can say it's a 41, but it needs water, sewer, drainage, it does Hemp Hill, Polk, and Ridgecrest. And all of them, you can see the PCIs. And that's what we looked at, was, we knew what streets were acting as collector's streets, and we knew what the PCIs were, which told us, you know, what ones we really need to work on. This was an overall city map, and I know it's small, but what I wanted to show, all the kind of yellow, orange, is stuff we've done in the last four or five years with the SIP. These are ones that we've already corrected. So kind of what we did with the bond issue is the purple. So we added to it, and we were making the connections. We're filling in the blanks out there with all the connectivity we've already done. And then the green is stuff that we can start on tomorrow. The council gives us the go-ahead, we've already got contractors ready. These are streets we can go do standard milling overlay, that sewer and water is in good shape, we can get those streets fixed, there'll be some concrete curving involved, but those are ones, you can see, we can go, we can do all those, we can start every one of those tomorrow. So that's kind of what we were trying to show, is how we blended it all together with what we've previously done, what needs to be done. I kind of blew these up a little bit, so you can see what we're proposing, the ones in the purple, the green is the milling and overlay. We kind of just broke this out in bigger sequences, so you can see what's going on with that. Few pictures of it, here's what Bodark looks like, and y'all can kind of see it's in pretty bad shape. O'Neil, same thing, you can see all the rutting, the cracking and everything on it. Jones Street, it's falling apart too. Center Point, and this is a little bit different. Center Point was built all the way from I-30 Frontage Road through to Center Point Development, where we have our water tower. But from this segment on out, it narrows down to a narrow two-lane road. Well, this gives us a complete north-south collector from I-30- Well, this gives us a complete north-south collector from I-30 to Jack Finney Road. So what, and you can see the alignment down here, it takes a, a small turn here and if, if there's a car here, you can't physically make the turn into the road. So we're looking at working, straightening this out, adding turn lanes here, this is all land is owned by Tech Star anyway, and making, you know, a turn lane into here and fixing this intersection, fixing this portion of the road so it can act as a full collector, get from Jack Finney all the way to I-30. That was the reason why we put Center Point on the list. Walnut Street, you can see all the rutting, it's kind of hard to see, but the rutting and everything here, the cracking in it. Stanford, I think everybody knows how bad Stanford is.
Yeah.
And that's my brief presentation, so I tried to keep it short and sweet, but.
Any questions?
Any questions or comments or any?
Tell us again, when's the traffic study going to be completed?
Probably in the next two to three weeks. I think y'all seen all the tubes and everything.
Can I anticipate any major changes with the traffic data?
I don't, been talking with them, we haven't really seen any surprises.
Any, any other quick question? With Trader's Road on the list, we intend to use the settlement money to do that work.
Yes, sir. That's why we're having it designed, so we can use settlement money to fix the worst areas of Trader's Road.
Thank you.
And could you just differentiate, I know the transportation committee talked about potholes and utility cuts.
Right.
And I think now the city staff is fixing the potholes, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And the contractor's going to do utility cuts?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
That's how you're differentiating?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have the capacity as a city to fix the potholes, all the potholes in this town?
Yes, sir, with the, with the resolution we've asked for tonight, transfer the monies into one, the 2021 SIP, that gives us the money we need to fix, I'm going to say we can fix every utility cut in the city now.
Okay, and potholes too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a quick question. So, you know, these, this, this list of seven that you just showed us has come up in part meetings. And I apologize if I missed something, I can't hear everything through the background, but what differentiates these seven streets from the others? What was the criteria that was to choose these seven?
We looked at traffic patterns that we're aware of, where people are trying to go and the volumes on it, and what if it's acting as a collector road? And we looked at that, we looked at water and sewer. Like, these areas, if we can, when we fix the sewer, we can upsize it, we can upsize the water. And like I said, just by doing the upsizing on Carroll Drive, we increased pressure and water out there tremendously. So that's part of what we're looking at is, yes, it acts as a collector, but it also acts as a collector for our water and sewer facilities also. So it would increase all our capacities, water, sewer availability. So we're looking at kind of all aspects of what, how the road is acting for us.
So you can get some cost efficiencies by combining utility work with road work where you're going to have to tear stuff up anywhere in the road?
We have in, in the, the unit price contract we have in front of you tonight, we've, we have bid unit prices for water work, sewer work, drainage work and road work. And we got the best prices we could get and I think we, we, I'm very pleased with the outcome of what we got on the unit price bidding.
Okay, are there any other questions? It's six o'clock, so what we missed, what we had there on this last item to D?
It's up to you.
Thank you.
Well, I think the room reception has to start at six.
No, it can start later, it just can't start earlier.
Okay. Do you want to?
Pretty important, so yeah.
Yeah.
Probably should. Depends on how fast you want it to go.
You dirty thing.
Dirty thing? All right, well, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. What you'll see on this presentation is going to be kind of the highlights of the departmental budget. You guys have been through several sessions, work sessions now where we've talked about what departments have requested as far as personnel, capital, going to give you kind of a overview of that. You do have it in your packet that you could follow along with, so. But we've also put in there the MNO, which is the maintenance and operations portion that we've gotten in the budget. Just to let you know, we do now, as of Friday, have our official appraised values, so we're working through those numbers, what we estimated versus what we came out as appraised, we're about, I think, $6,000 to $10,000 apart, so we were pretty close where we started at. So we're in, we're in good shape there. So we'll kind of give these overviews, kind of talk about a few little things, if there's any suggestions, recommendations, we can certainly put those in because at the next city council meeting, I will be giving you an actual proposed budget. So if there's anything that you'd like to see in there, we would certainly like to get that in there. Before we do the proposed budget, obviously you can change it up until, obviously this is just the first draft of it. I think in the past years, we've gone through six, seven or eight different drafts of the budget and the numbers as we go through that, so we can certainly do that as well. So, but the sooner that we get it, obviously our staff, we, we like that a little bit better. Just to give you an idea, last year, once in on the tax rate was about $223,000, assuming a 99% collection rate. This year, it's going to be $244,530 on once in on the tax rate. When we're talking about revenues, we kind of just broke up the major pieces of that. When you get your proposed budget, there's a couple of pages of revenues that we go through, but we just kind of summarized everything here. But as far as property tax, and this is going to be budgeted versus budgeted, so we've got projected numbers in there that you're going to see in the proposed budget. So there's a lot of different things in those. Property tax-wise, last year we budgeted 8, 8.6 million. Coming up this next year, we'll budget 8.8 million, which is a difference of, an increase of 1.9%. Sales tax, obviously this is what we budgeted at 8.1 million. Obviously, we're in a lot better shape than that. And so we budgeted this year as a 3% increase on top of what we actually got, not on, on top of what we budgeted. So the difference in what we budgeted last year and what we're going to budget this year is going to be 9.3, which is 14 and a half percent. Franchise fees are about the same. Juice, there's a, there's a little bit of difference in there and you'll see on the juice side of it, they had some numbers that they had projected that they thought somebody was going to come online. Obviously, that person, that industry did not come online, so their franchise fees were a little bit lower. So there's a little bit difference there, you'll see that. But overall, we're still in good shape. We went 4.6 million to 4.9 for a difference of 7.5. License and permits, obviously you guys know what's kind of going on around town. We've doubled in permits so far. And so based on what we budgeted last year, what we're projecting already this year, we budgeted about a 64% increase, which is not too far off from where we're at. So that's just the growth, the budgeting, or, sorry, the building permits and those kind of things, just the housing and what we have in the works. Other revenues include pilots, any kind of other fees, courts, libraries, just kind of other little stuff, transfers that come in from the water sewer side, anything like that. So that decreased a little bit there. So overall, our revenues were at $26,174 last year. This next year, we're going to budget about $27,946 for a 6.7% increase. Parks and Recreation, you guys saw his presentation there. From the operations side, they're going to go from 1.5 to 1.8. That looks like a really big jump, but what that includes is the matching portion that by ordinance, we are now required to put in there for the, the park fees. So that include, includes the 244, 530, which is once in on the tax rate. So that's why you see that in there. Obviously, we won't be, we won't be using that until the following year, so we'll just keep putting that in to match that every single year. And then once you guys decide to do whatever project council will decide to do, then that's when we'll put that in there. Personnel requested, they requested one of their recreation aids from a part-time to a full-time, which is going to be an increase of 14,000 there. This is what they requested, this is not necessarily everything that's in there. We'll talk about everything that's in there. And you can certainly ask questions now, but everything that's in there when we come to the next meeting at the proposed budget. So a couple of things, some equipment, aerator, triplex mower, fairway unit. A big one there was the Oak Creek Park upgrades, which he's been requesting for the past couple of years. We were able to put that in there at 275,900. Grand Park parking lot, which was 93,400. And then within his, I put it down at capital because it added up to 38,800, but within, you know, he increased some picnic tables, some landscaping and some additional basketball, basketball courts and things like that and basketball goals, and that's within his operating side of it. I know he gave his presentation a long time ago. On the community development side, he went from 820 to a little over 1 million this year for a 28.6% increase. What that is going to be, the additional lien filings that we have to do with all the additional properties that we have and those kind of things. So it costs us when we have to go down and file liens and things like that. So the additional of that, they've increased that there. And also, he requested an additional permitting clerk due to the growth that they're seeing. They're just, they're just getting inundated over there with everything from small to big, and so they really just need some help, somebody that can just process. And so that's the total cost that you'll see cost to the city. Everything that I tell you guys is going to be the total cost. So that total cost for that permitting clerk is about 43,000. On the library side, she had a slight increase at 6.1% from her MNO. And then if you'll remember, she did request some additional shoveling in order to comply with ADA and those kind of things in her presentation, so that's 67,000. Animal control, they also had a slight increase at 2.7. If you'll remember, in the current budget year that we're in right now, you guys approved a little over $7,000 for some kennel replacements, for six of those. He's requested an additional 10 kennel replacements this year at 12,900. And that'll just continue, I think, within three or four years, we'll have all the kennels replaced. And we do those, phase those in, so that helps out a lot to replace those. The current kennels that they're, the old ones that were in, were in the building when they built it, so I think they're 20-plus years old at least. On the CVV side, he had a slight decrease from 521 to 494 for a 5.2% decrease. We included the maroon field for the shade structures, which we've been doing that for, I think, three years now. And I think we'll have the maroon field and then after that, we'll have one more field of the orange field. And being out there, those are a great asset to have, especially on a day like today, but those are very valuable to have. They're expensive, but they're very good to have and really make that park look nice. And then we've also included the city entrance signs. If you'll notice, out on 380 and the 69 entrance, those, those signs are a little bit outdated and so we'd like to update those. So we've got a couple of quotes, we, we started working on them last year. We were going to bring it to city council in a, in the previous year, but with the way the Hotel Motel Fund was unsure and the instability of it last year, we really didn't want to bring it forward, so we just included it in the budget this year. So that would really update those entrances to the city. Just for footnotes, this account, this account includes a $45,000 transfer to Main Street that helps out there. The tourism distribution of 50,000 that you guys will decide upon that. And then we also support some sports tournaments that Brett holds up, holds out at the sports park at $3,000. Venue management, there's 11.4% increase in the MNO side of that. No capital requested from that side of it. The personnel requested, he did request a GMA technical specialist, which is only going to be part-time to help with the number of shows that we've been having and also the expensive equipment that, that we do have up there. Good news is that Kevin worked with finance and we have applied for, it's called the shuttered, shuttered venues grant. And I think we got a little bit over $34,000 that we were awarded. So that's included in the budget too, and that went along with COVID and everything that we, all the revenue, based on the revenues that we lost last year to be able to help support on the personnel side. So that's good news there. Main Street, slight increase of 2.4%. The capital requested was the solar lighting. If you'll remember, in the sidewalk project, we included some solar lighting in front of land ends. We'd like to continue that and phase that in all through downtown, so we requested about $15,000 there. And then also continue replacing or putting out, actually not replacing, I'm sorry, putting out new downtown benches in certain areas to continue to, to enhance the downtown area. I think we've been doing that for, I don't know, at least five, five, six years that I've been here, and it's adding benches, so it's been really nice addition. From the fire side, went from 6.6 million to 6.9 million at 4.5% increase. If you'll remember from his presentation, he requested a fire investigator and inspector. This goes along with the growth, you saw all the building plans that they have to investigate. The same problem that community development's having with all the building increases, same problem that, you know, is we only have one fire inspector to go out and inspect all those. So to be, really to be able to help Jake out. Total cost of that position is 154,000. The fire truck pays you go, 250,000, that's been in the budget for, for as long as I can remember. And what that will do is allow us in 2023 to be able to replace our platform or one of our ladder trucks that, and that's been a really great program. Our equipment's in really good shape because of that program, so I do suggest continuing that. The fitness equipment for the fire stations, he's been requesting that for a couple of years now, so we phased that out. We get, we're getting the furniture and those things replaced. Currently, if lumber prices will go down, so it can fit into the budget. And then, so the next step to help upgrade those stations would be the, the fitness equipment. The, he requested a brush truck for replacement at 165,000 and also his firehouse software at 25,000. All right, on the PD side, so they're going to go from 8.3 million to 8.8 at a 6.7% increase. If you'll remember, they requested three patrol officers, which will cost a total of 264. They also requested an additional communications operator at 53,000 total. And in the past, they've requested a command post replacement at 267, also requested it again this year. Flashlight replacements, shotgun replacements, enhanced sighting for the rifles, and then also they requested their gate to be repaired for 20,000, which if you do see that, you'll see that on the facility side, not necessarily, but they did request it, so I wanted to make sure I included it here. Getting into public works on the streets and traffic side, you'll see they went from 1.3 billion, excuse me, to 1.8 million for a 37% increase. What you'll see there is they have requested additional for drainage on the maintenance side of things. So that's, that citywide drainage down there at 300,000, that's, that's a big increase right there. And then we also upped the, the drainage and the valley gutters. So there's two big maintenance things that we added in there. So that's where the, you're going to see that big increase. They did request four additional street workers at 223. And like I talked about, the capital would be the citywide drainage at 300,000, the Boo Circle drainage, which we, has been a problem for a long time, at 1.2 million. They requested a dump, a dump truck at 153,000. There's the valley gutters and sidewalks at 250, and then also a jetter trailer at 80,000. On the engineering side, so the big change here at 46.2% increase is going to be the construction inspector. So that's going to be our biggest increase that, that there, that's also the same issue we're having with the, also the additional bond, that you're going to have the 50 million, so you're going to need additional inspectors. And especially if we're going to do that in a two-year timeframe, it's going to go a lot faster and there's going to be a lot more work to be done. And so that'll help there. And also just with the additional developments that are going in, there's just a ton of inspections to be done, make sure everything's done correctly and properly, so really helping out in that area. They also requested a City Works, which is a software for public work, at 75,000. And there's several transmission line replacements, these are all over town, 1.2 million, upsizing to a 20, 20-inch, 845. South Side Water Line Replacement at 300,000, Washington Street Water Replacement at 450, and then Cattle Street at 494. So those were requested. On the water treatment side, went from 2.5 million to 2.7 million for an 8% increase. The big thing, and Press has talked about it, with not only the subcommittee, but the Lake Twiakini Pump Station Repair. That's a big piece of where we get our water from, and so that's a very important piece. When, when staff was putting together capital, that was the number one priority at this point. So if we don't have that, then, you know, we don't have water. Transfer pump, H4 replacement, 80,000. And then also talked about including in there AMI water meters. Juice is headed in that direction for their electric meters, and so we're trying to head in that direction and phase that in. So year one, we'd ask for 250,000 to be able to get those automated meters, water meters, so we don't have to have a meter reader go out and read those, they'll, they'll be live. And then water distribution went from 2.8 to 2.7 for a slight decrease. They have requested four utility workers. The only equipment that they requested from the water distribution side was a backhoe at 154,000 and then a mini excavator at 65,000. Wastewater collection went from 928 to 975 for a 5% increase, and they have on that side of it requested a new dump truck at 153,000. On the wastewater treatment side, a slight increase at 8.5% from 1.7. On the wastewater treatment side, a slight increase at 8.5% from 1.7 to 1.8. They have requested Plant Operator B at 75,000. Obviously, if we are seeing more development, we're using more water, obviously, it has to go somewhere, so there's more wastewater. So being able to have that additional personnel to help with the growth would be helpful for Bill out there. They have requested a spare fine screen for headworks at 290. And then we have some North Side Water and Sewer Replacements Phase One at 420, and then additional sludge storage at the wastewater treatment plant for 980, which became very apparent during the winter storm, when trucks weren't able to run to take and haul that off, we didn't have enough storage there. So we got pretty, pretty, pretty close to being critical in that area. Luckily, they were able to get out there and do that, but if we had this additional storage, we wouldn't be in that position again. So just some addition there. Out at the airport, saw an increase of 20.7 there. The capital that we requested out there, we currently have an erosion project that's going out there, which was a partnership with TechDOT, if you remember, I don't know if, maybe Jerry and Al were both here, that we got a grant for that. So kind of in addition to building on that infrastructure, we'd like to do some apron expansion. We have a waiting list for hangars and everything else out there, currently a very long waiting list. We'd like to do some additional shade hangars out there, an airport retention pond that goes along with that erosion project that we're kind of working with TechDOT Aviation on. And then also the realignment and extension of Major's Road, currently, that kind of winds around. If we, you know, eventually, if we grow and L3 Harris grows where they need to grow, we'll straighten that road out and kind of move some things around there, so we put that in there as well. On the IT side, so went from 1 million to 926. Every year, we put in $50,000 a year for computer replacements, so we'll continue to do that. And then this year, we really went to leasing everything. When the pandemic hit, we really had to shift and become more flexible. Those people that had desktops really transitioned them to laptops. So over this whole entire year, I've asked them to transition most everybody that we can that can work from home to transition to a laptop. So in doing that, we've had, obviously Patrol has their laptop leases that we use every year, but we've also had those additional laptops, those are for those folks that work at home, we just use docking station now. We do still have some desktops because we don't have everybody that can work from home, obviously. And we've also started to lease our server. And then if you'll remember from the PD presentation, they asked for a geo-validation, which will help in their Spillman software, which helps with their addresses and response times and those things like that. So they've asked for that addition there. Talking about our pay study, so for those of you that weren't here, a couple of years ago, we implemented some changes to our police pay plan. The year after that, we implemented some changes to our fire pay plan. And then the plan was last year to be able to implement some changes to our non-civil service employee pay plan, to just kind of update that, it hadn't been done in for a long time. That was put on hold due to COVID because we were unsure of the revenues and what things were gonna look like, so we put those on hold. So the plan at that time was to get every non-civil service job code in the top 50% of our comparison cities, not to be at the bottom of our competitive cities, but at least be in that conversation. And then also be comparable to the employee that holds that position. So if you, you know, we don't want, if you've been here for 20-plus years, that your salary is competitive with somebody that's been here for 20-plus years and not at a starting salary of somebody else. So those are the kind of things where we started. Obviously, we put it on hold. So what we've done this year is we went back to each of our department directors. Our current pay plan that we have has everybody lumped in certain codes. So I could have a librarian in with a utility worker, I could have a finance person in with a parks worker. And so they're all kind of lumped together, which really doesn't work for us anymore. It might have worked when it happened, I can't remember the exact year that they put it into place. So what we did, we went to each department director and said, tell me what pay plan would work for you to be able to hire. And so we did that. So what that'll allow us to do, and we've created a pay plan for each department. So Parks will have their own, Finance will have their own pay plan, and we'll sit in that pay plan. So when they sit down with a prospective employee, they'll, they can show them a career path. You know, you're gonna be one, two, and three, and then you can go from here to here. In the past, we didn't have that, we just went from different jobs to different jobs. So it was really, really no career path, where I could go and that kind of thing. So we really wanted to do that. We wanted to be able to set them up to be for succession planning, for people, you know, we've got Sherri, if you'll remember from Sherri's presentation, we've got several people that are eligible to retire. How do we fill those positions? And so if we can, if we can have somebody that fills from within, then that's even better. And then also the flexibility to adapt to the changing market. Our market is changing day by day, Sherri kind of presented you some numbers in there. So we really wanted to be able to kind of focus on that. So in just talking about the pay plan updates, and that's, this is through all of our fund, or the general fund, it's gonna cost us a little over $100,000. And then the water and sewer fund is just 5,781. So in talking, and that's changing minimums, it's changing ranges, that's changing maximums. And so it's just a little bit of everything, and I can give you some more detail if you'd like some more of that. But really kind of changing all that kind of things and really, really being able to try to be competitive. I don't have it on the slide here, but we have talked about some hiring incentives, some recruitment incentives, some, you know, those kind of things, and Talia's still working those numbers. So when we come back and talk about the proposed budget, I'll certainly give you those numbers. Sherri did a lot of research on those and kind of what other people are doing so that we can be competitive and in the conversation with those people about, you know, recruitments and keeping people and incentivizing people to not only come here, but also stay here for the long term, if possible, if that's possible with, so those are the kind of things that we talked about with our pay study. Personnel additions, these are the ones that you'll see in the actual proposed budget. We're proposing to add the three patrol officers that have been requested, the fire inspector.
Can I ask you something?
Yes.
We're short 10 right now, right? Is that right?
We're short seven, technically, yes.
Okay, so you're adding three to the seven, we're already short seven.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, requesting to put in the budget, yes.
Okay.
Fire inspector, construction inspector, permit clerk, and the wastewater plant operator B, a full-time position. The GMA technical specialist is a part-time position. And then a recreation aide going from currently who is part-time and shifting that to a full-time position. So really, when we were looking at the additions that we talked about, we're in response to the growth that we're having. So really kind of focused on, you know, if we're growing, you know, we're gonna need these positions, whether we can fill them or not, those are positions that we're gonna need. And hopefully, the things that we're doing and changing and doing internally, that we could fill those positions as quickly as possible. So that's really kind of what our focus was on the addition of the positions. So, and really, besides the public works positions, those are kind of everything that was requested at this point. This one's a little difficult for y'all to see, but you can see it on your deal. This should give you a picture of, you know, where we've gone from 1920 to approved 2021, and then proposed from 2122. So it just gives you an idea of each fund, so it talks about the general, this will be the picture of the general fund. And then this is gonna be the water wastewater fund, and then other funds that we have, because we have positions in those as well. But the important thing is to look at the total, all positions down at the bottom there over the years, and you can see the totals that we've added over the years. We've added some part-times and things like that, so you can look at those. Vehicle replacement, what we're really proposing to add here is really just kind of the police Tahos next year. They've notified us, Enterprise has notified us, that there should be, not be any problems in getting a police Tahoe. Now getting pickup trucks and things like that's gonna be difficult. We haven't even gotten any of the vehicles that we actually put into lease for this year because of the state of the market right now. So I think, I think that may be shifting here pretty quickly, but as of right now, we're not proposing any new vehicles besides the police Tahos in this new budget. Only because the fact you can put it in there, but we're probably not gonna get them. Because we haven't even gotten, we're in July, we're about to be in August this year, and we have still, we ordered them back in October, and we still have yet to receive them. So, I mean, we could certainly put it in there if you'd like to, but just knowing that we probably will not get them.
Going back a few slides to the dump truck, whatever, are we exploring leasing possibilities for any of the other equipment or maybe some of the stuff at the golf course?
Yes, actually, everything at the golf course, the aerators and all those, those are leasing options. I gave you the total numbers, but what we're gonna put in the budget is going to be the leasing options for all of those.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. Dump trucks, I don't think we've explored dump truck leasing, that really hasn't been advantageous for us in the past. We could certainly look at it again. Yeah, something to look at, some of that, when you get into that heavier equipment, it gets less advantageous to lease those kind of things, because they do, especially, well, our dump trucks have lasted pretty long time. So they've been in good shape. And this is kind of everything that we've talked about. We'll give you an idea that line up with your council goals that you guys approved a couple of months ago. So build the infrastructure that lasts, and we put in the bond stuff in there, upgrade water infrastructure there for the 50 million that we're proposing that we're talking about in work session, some of the community events that we have through the different departments, and just kind of lined up everything that we're talking about in the proposed budget with your goals. Important dates to remember, proposed budget will be presented to you August 10th at the next meeting. First public hearing on the budget, which you guys will set those hearings up tonight, will be on August 24th. And then we'll do kind of one shot of everything, the public hearing on the tax rate, second public hearing on the budget, adopt a budget, ratify a tax rate, and adopt a tax rate on September 14th, and that'll be the date for an October 1 budget. So I'll be happy to answer any question or take any comments, so you guys have.
Any questions?
I, I hope it's a quick question. I noticed on several of the summary slides, it seemed like the change percentage or the amount of change change over the year didn't add up with what was listed below, excluding cap. I was wondering if that's like rounding?
Well, because what is requested is not necessarily everything that's in there. So when you're looking at it, don't, just know that what they requested might not be in there. So when you get your proposed budget next week, that's when every number should match up.
We got all the details.
Yes, and all the details and everything like that, so we'll go through each one.
Any other questions?
All right, thank y'all.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back in a regular session. Yeah.